All right, welcome everybody to the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of August 21st, 2023. If the clerk will help me out with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Burton. Burton is absent. Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Gramkowski.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal.
Here.
Porter. Porter is absent. Snow.
Here.
Eight present.
All right, if you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for our country, our community, our families, and our freedom. We thank you for our current military service members and for all the men and women veterans who have served and sacrificed. Throughout our nation's history, we ask that you bless all of them and their families. And tonight, we give thanks for our police and fire first responders in our community and throughout our country who bravely serve our citizens. We pray for their safety and well-being as they do their job. We pray for guidance and thank you and ask you that you give each of us compassion, patience, courage, understanding, and wisdom as we conduct our city's business here this evening. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
All right, item three, I don't believe we have anybody registered for public comment. However, we did have a event regarding our police or fire department. And we were able to take custody of, no pun intended, Chief Woody. And we were able to take custody of a new fire truck. And I know Chief Shadle has some comments on that. Chief?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to thank you and the council and Attorney Drell and Shannon. We presented for this engine in June of '22, and we knew it was going to be a long haul. It was a little longer than anticipated. We received it on June 8th, and then we put it into service on Friday morning. So it's in service, taking care of our community as we speak. So thank you guys for that. I also have noted that the price has continued to climb on those. So we, ours was $669, and the average price right now is close to $1 million. There's been some changes in standard from the EPA to, for the engines that have added up to $100,000 of cost for just the motor itself. And then back then, when we were looking at this, the lead time was one to two years. And now the lead time is two to four years. And interest rates, the federal funds rate has gone off, gone up four and a half percent since we purchased that. And if you remember, of that, we put down about, about half down, and then we financed the rest. So we were able to save considerable interest by acting when we did. So I appreciate all your help with that. And Pastor Alan Bus came and blessed our engine, and I'm sure it will serve the community well for many, many years.
Thank you, Chief. And I do want to thank, I do want to thank the City Council. I think our timing on that purchase was about as good as you could get it. If we would have waffled a little bit, we would have paid a lot more, as the chief said. To borrow money is much more expensive as well. And so to be able to fund that, either way, we got the best bargain. So I appreciate all your, all the council's hard work on that and support. And thank you, Chief. And thank your committee. I know you had a, we had a truck committee, an engine committee that did research on that as well. And they provided us with some options that were less expensive, so some better options for us.
Will do, sir. I'll pass that on.
Thank you. Item four, approval of minutes, for a approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of August 7th, 2023, as presented. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, thank you. And a second, second by Alderman Mohal, thank you. Any questions, any corrections, any comments on that motion for the minutes of August 7th as presented? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And under public hearing, item five, we have none. Under six, special messages and proclamations. This evening, we have Kathy Hughes and Laura Shabinski? I, Shabinski? Okay, thank you. And Laura Shabinski. And we have first proclamation for Constitution Week. So if I could get one or both of the ladies up here, whoever? I'm gonna read this to you. Okay. So the proclamation for Constitution Week is as follows. Whereas the United States Constitution, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic committed to the rule of law. And whereas the United States Constitution is one of the oldest, world's oldest surviving constitutions, and its basic tenets have remained virtually unchanged since its inception. And whereas Constitution Week commemorates the formation and signing of the U.S. Constitution by thirty-nine brave men on September 17th, 1787. And whereas Constitution Week and its respective celebrations is an opportunity to acknowledge the work of our founding fathers and to honor the supreme law of the land. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document, its notable anniversary and the patriotic celebrations commemorating it. Now therefore, I Clinton Morris, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week in Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois. In witness whereof, I herein too set my hand and cause, cause to be affixed the great seal of the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, on this 21st day of August in the year of our Lord, 2023. So Laura, the Constitution is our document that provides us with everything regarding our government. And I know that it is valuable. We also probably don't recognize that enough. Once, you know, a year comes around, but I think those of us in government all recognize it. And I want to thank you for coming this evening, and I want to give this to you. And also, if you want to say a few words, I would love to have you. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Laura Shabinski, Region of the Asa Katrel Chapter in Belvidere. Our chapter consists of fifty-six members, strong and growing. The National Society Daughters of the American Revolution celebrate the Constitution of the United States every day through our mission statement of historic preservation, education, and patriotism. Our belief in the Constitution is so strong that the DAR in 1955 petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into Public Law Number 915 on August 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Now I ask something of you, as leaders, ambassadors, if you will, of your community to join the DAR in educating those around you, young and or old, coworkers, and family about the Constitution of the United States during the week of September 17th through the 23rd. What does it mean to you, and what does it mean to them? Thank you on behalf of the Asa Katrel Chapter in honoring us with this proclamation. We look forward to working with you and the community soon. Thank you.
Kathy.
Thank you. All right, and if Kathy Hughes would come up. Hi Kathy, how are you? Fine. Nice to see you. Okay, the proclamation for the Star Spangled Banner Day reads as follows. Whereas the Star Spangled Banner, our national anthem, was written during the War of 1812. And whereas, on September 14th, 1814, in Baltimore, Maryland, at the Battle of Fort McHenry, Francis Scott Key witnessed the bombardment of Fort McHenry while being held on a British ship. And whereas, the following morning, upon seeing the American flag still flying over Fort McHenry, Mr. Key was inspired to write a poem that was titled "Defense of Fort McHenry", which was later set to music and renamed "The Star Spangled Banner". And whereas, by constitutional resolution, signed by President Herbert Hoover, the Star Spangled Banner became the national anthem of the United States of America on March 3rd, 1931. And whereas, millions of Americans cherish and respect the words and music of the Star Spangled Banner. And whereas, holidays, sporting, and public events begin with the singing or playing of the national anthem as reaffirmation of patriotism and love of country. And whereas, the National Society, United States Daughters of 1812, calls for a day to observe the historical significance of the Star Spangled Banner and to celebrate the words that Francis Scott Key penned in 1814. Now therefore, I Clinton Morris, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 14th, 2023, as Star Spangled Banner Day in Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois. In witness whereof, I herein too set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, on this 21st day of August in the year of our Lord, 2023. Kathy, I want to give that to you, and if you want to say a few words, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. I've seen many of you before, but this is a new role for me. I am Kathy Hughes, one of the newest members of the John Kinsey Chapter, Daughters of 1812. During the War of 1812, Francis Scott Key, a 35-year-old American lawyer, witnessed the bombardment of Fort McHenry in Baltimore Harbor from a ship eight miles away. When darkness arrived, Key saw only red erupting in the night sky. And in the early morning light, he saw the American flag flying over the fort. Key put his thoughts on paper while still onboard the ship, setting his words to the tune of a popular English song. In 1951, this became our national anthem. The flag that inspired Key still survives, though it is fragile and worn by the years. The Star Spangled Banner is a symbol of American history that ranks with the Statue of Liberty and the Charters of Freedom, and is a core patriotic education focus of the Daughters of 1812. We thank you for recognizing Star Spangled Banner Day on September 14th with your proclamation. Thank you. Thank you so much. We'll see you again next year.
I hope so, yeah.
Maybe sooner.
Okay. All right, thank you Kathy and Laura. I really appreciate you coming here this evening and sharing with us the reasons why it is important to celebrate our country's history and heritage. So thank you. All right, item C, under special messages and proclamations, we have Pam Lopez-Fettis with Growth Dimensions. Hi Pam, good evening.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. In front of you, I give you a report for this month. This, some of our numbers are as of last week. But I'll kind of go through a few of them because they have a little bit of different timeline in there. So our active business projects that we've had, we have about sixty-nine new business projects and thirty-two projects that are from existing businesses. Eighteen of those existing businesses are currently in the construction process, as well as seventeen new business projects. Now, even though our enterprise numbers are a little bit lower, it's 680 million in capital investment. We actually track it as we see the enterprise-owned projects. But these projects that we're talking about with construction are totaling over 700 million for this year. So we'll, we'll start adding some of those numbers together so you actually see a full picture. Our enterprise-owned projects are only those companies that are in the enterprise zone and those who are receiving projects. So we might have a Walmart, for instance. So we have the grading company that comes in, and their investment is a piece of that project. So we track that under the enterprise zone, but the full project is much larger than that. So we'll, we'll give you those numbers a little bit more. As I was going through this, and I'm trying to think of ways that we can improve the communication and the information to you so you have that in front of you. We've had just under 500 business contacts since the beginning of the year. And this is another thing that I didn't realize that we weren't doing is because we are co-located with the city of Belvidere, and we have many interactions with the different departments in the city on these projects, we don't really track them. So we have not been under, documenting some of our communication, so, in business context. And the city is one of our most important partners in Growth Dimensions. So I just wanted to share with you the little bit of information. But these, some of the projects that we've been working on is, you know, the Walmart, which is Project Yukon, and they're anticipating breaking ground in October. I know this is a little bit later than we anticipated, but they are still in the process of closing on the land. We are also, have talked to a Roma Hill Cannabis, and they're planning on a breaking, I'm sorry, their opening day in late August or early September. And we've also been working with Midwest Refrigeration Services, which you may be aware of. And the city and Growth Dimensions and a number of partners are working on the grants available and applications for them to offset some of their costs. We've also been working with Cherry Village of Cherry Valley on a couple of projects. And why I included this is because these projects are industrial projects, and they will also require some water and sewer. And the sewer will be the same connection that the city of Belvidere would also be taking it. So some of these projects can also offset some of those costs for sewer. Also, it could expedite the timeline that we want to get sewer to the, to this area. We've also been working with Region One Planning Council and regional partners on a grant called the Rise Grant. This is to conduct an emergency industry cluster analysis for workforce readiness planned for Boone, McHenry, and Winnie Weagle Counties. As you know, you know, workforce is a challenge, and, you know, throughout the U.S., it's an international problem. But since COVID, it's even increased. And to give us a plan that will further understand where we need to focus our training dollars, our efforts. And also, you know, attracting a workforce will also attract businesses. So we're going to be working with Region One Planning Council and the consultant that has just been secured to develop a plan. They'll be talking to businesses in the area, interviewing them, and then we'll have something before the end of the year. We've also coordinated a tour with Rock Valley College and Congressman Foster. The Technology Center was of interest to him. Anytime we can get an elected official to the area to understand what we're doing, to develop that pipeline, is a way that we can also increase funding and for some of our efforts and resources into the community to help us. Also wanted to identify a couple of activities coming up. Wanted you to save the date for our Tuesday, September 19th, FIPM at the Community Building. We're going to have our annual dinner. Shawn Watson is going to be talking about artificial intelligence. This is something that I think that with technology and with the changes and increased attention, it's something that we need to start talking out and get in front of us. A lot of people are a little bit fair of where technology is going these days. You know, I think we were years ago, and it's just advanced significantly, especially after COVID. So we'll be able to address some questions and hear a presentation about artificial intelligence. And just to let you know that you have, you know, some tables available, so you just let the mayor know, as they are know, if you want to, to attend. We're also working with the Region on Manufacturing Day, scheduled in October. However, we're going to be working with manufacturing, highlighting manufacturers in our community and our region. And if you know, you want to be involved, or if you know any businesses that want to be involved, please let us know.
Thank you, Pam. Any questions for Ms. Fetis? Go ahead. Yes.
Thank you. Hi Pam.
Hello.
So I had two questions for you. So Graham's Restaurant got demolished pretty quickly. Do you know a timeframe for Dunkin' Donuts to be breaking ground and starting construction on that?
I'm probably going to defer that to Gina because she's probably had more recent contact than I have. Okay, we're going over here. Sorry.
They had to, they've been in communication with KIP. They've had a redesign. They're building to go from steel to wood or vice versa. So obviously, there's different like weigh, weight loads and stuff. And the contractor for Dairy Queen is the same one, so they wouldn't be starting anyway till after Dairy Queen.
Okay, and then, I don't know if you can answer this or not. I read a rumor that the state of Illinois had purchased 170 acres of land adjacent to Chrysler. Is there any truth to that, do you know?
There's no record of purchase. We did sign a non-disclosure agreement, so I do have to put that out there. However, there is no record of a purchase being, that has been made by the state of Illinois for that property. You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions for Pam? Okay, thank you, Pam. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I might piggyback a little bit on, on what you had said, Pam, about Congressman Foster. So Congressman Foster's office has been really instrumental. When I first come into office, I had talked, had a nice conversation with Brent, although he did, he did kind of laugh a little bit, maybe a little wildly. But when I come into office, I had mentioned him about, you know, with the train, traffic, passenger rail possibility here. And it seems to be a little bit closer than what it was. They've finally earmarked, I think, 275 million towards passenger rail with Metro. And with that also, we have had tremendous success with not only General Mills but Walmart and some of the aldermen this week. So far, I've been able to contact about another project that we have out by General Mills. I will, the rest, the aldermen that I haven't been able to speak with will be coming in to chat about that project. But so all of that, all of that leads to increased freight. And we have had the Appleton Road tied up in the city for years, since 1965, 1966, whenever Stellantis Chrysler started running trains. And with that, I had put in with Brent, and Brent and Shannon had helped to put in for some funding, federal funding, to be able to put a grade separation in Overpass. So it all makes sense, especially with the increase of freight and then the increase of, hopefully, freight traffic. I'm still optimistic that Stellantis is going to manufacture vehicles here. We will still have the same train, hopefully, that we've ran since 1965. But with Congressman Foster's help, we've been able to at least do the engineering part of that. I think that's a $32 million project, thereabouts, plus or minus. And the engineering on that has been earmarked to be able to do that. The project itself, once the engineering is done, so far, projects similar to that have been 1,000% that they have been, come to fruition. So I think it was a good time for Congressman Foster to come to Belvidere. And he did, he did pay attention. I got to give him credit. He did listen. So all of the things that we have going on, Pam is right. Anytime we can get federal of the year or we can get federal dollars, you know, we deserve them. We pay in federal dollars as much as anybody else, and if we don't go get them, somebody else is going to get them. So we'll see how that works out. But thank you, Pam. I appreciate it. And item seven, approval of expenditures, general and special funds expenditures in the amount of $2,367,004.20. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Albertini, thank you. In front of you are the, is the paperwork for those expenditures. If there are any questions, please feel free to ask. Okay? Hearing none, we have a motion then to approve the general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $2,367,004.20. All those in favor of the motion will, when the name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Albertini.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Gramkowski.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion passed, thank you. And then we also have, under approval of expenditures, Water and Sewer Fund expenditures in the amount of $1,353,178.70. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Thank you, Alderman Flurry, and second, Alderman Albertini, thank you. Any questions on the information that's in front of you this evening regarding those expenditures? Alderman Frank.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sort of losing my voice, but I wanted to, I have a constituent that always wants me to mention what some of these high-ticket items are. And with the help of the budget financier, Ms. Shannon, I'm going to just briefly touch upon some of the bigger items. So the metro paramedic service, it's a monthly fee now that was $138,000. And out of the capital fund, it was the Bowler Construction Clarifiers and the Antrak Group Irene Road and the Antrak Group Logan Avenue, Midland Bank Debt Services. And then the Water and Sewer Northern Illinois Service Company Irene and Hockey. And then Williams Brother Waste Water Treatment Plant. So those are just some of the highlights of the big ticket items. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Frank. So we have a motion and a second on the floor for the Water and Sewer Fund expenditures in the amount of $1,353,178.70. If there are no other questions, no other comments. All those in favor, please, when your name is called, answer aye. your name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you, and we'll move on to number eight. Note for the record, items A through G have been placed on file with the City Clerk Turnipseed's office, I'm sorry, A through G, if I said H, A through G. And we have item H, minutes of the committee of the whole, building, planning, zoning, public works, dated August 14th, 2023. Could I have a motion for those approval, please, their approval? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Snow. Thank you. Any questions, any concerns or corrections on the minutes of August 14th that are in your packet? Okay? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's anybody opposed, hearing nobody, motion passed, thank you. And unfinished business, nine, it does carry to the other page, we have item A, six, Ordinance 633H, in front of you this evening for a second reading. That is an ordinance amending section 2-61 of the meetings and time and place of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Albertini, thank you, second by Alderman Flurry. And essentially, what this will do is change the meeting time so they're consistently at 6:00 PM throughout the month. There'll be no 7 o'clock meetings. Anybody have any, is there any comments, questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I would just like to ask the staff that attend these meetings if anybody would rather not see this happen.
Earlier the better, as far as public works is concerned.
I already have 6 o'clock and 5:30 meetings, so it's actually a little bit easier for me to keep track of what time is what, because there'll be markups and stuff.
I agree as well. It's much easier if they're all at 6:00.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all those in favor of Ordinance 633H, that being an ordinance amending section 2-61, meetings, time and place of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code. Will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Six in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And moving on, item 10, Ordinance 634H is before you for a first reading. No action required this evening. It'll be back to you in two weeks, that being an ordinance amending section 110-91, stop streets of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code to add stop, excuse me, stop signs, to add at West Fifth Street and Eighth Avenue as a two-way stop. Item B is a first reading as well, Ordinance 635H, that being an ordinance amending section 110-92, which yield intersections of the City of Belvidere to add Willow Street as a two-way yield at Beacon Drive, and that'll be back as well. And item 636H is a first reading this evening, an ordinance amending section 74-221 of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code relating to fireworks. That will be back to the council as well, and no further action required on them this evening. Motion's forwarded from Committee of the Whole, Building, Planning, Zoning, and Public Works of August 14th, 2023. Motion's out of Planning, Zoning. Chairman McGee?
Thank you, Mayor. A, motion to approve the special use extension for 2061-2115 North State Street for one year.
Okay. We have that motion out of committee. Is there any comments, any questions regarding that motion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, that are in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you, Chairman McGee. Motion's out of public works. Chairman Snow?
Thank you, Your Honor. B, motion to approve the cost of the NBIS bi- biannual bridge inspection for a time and material basis not to exceed $13,500. This work to be paid for from line item number 01-5-630-6140, Engineering Services.
Okay, thank you. We have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions, any concerns, any comments regarding that motion? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed. Item C, Chairman Snow?
Motion to approve amendment number one to the engineering service agreement with Strand Associates for well number 11, in the amount not to exceed $8,550. This work to be paid for from the Sewer Plant Depreciation Fund.
Okay, we have that motion out of, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any comments, concerns regarding that motion on the floor? Okay. Hearing none, all those that are in favor of the motion, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Item D, Chairman Snow?
Motion to approve the use of $816,000 of ARPA funds in the FY '24 construction costs related to the primary clarifier upgrades.
Okay, thank you. We have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions or comments regarding that motion in front of you this evening? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Snow. Motion's out of public safety. Chairman Flurry?
Thank you, Mayor. E, motion to accept the donation of $100, check number 4566 from Paul and Dorothy Hale to be used for the qualification banquet this October.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions regarding that motion on the floor? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item F, Chairman Flurry?
Motion to approve the proposal from Aldos Incorporated in the amount of $40,933 to replace the concrete approach at Station 2 and repair the Station 2 drains. This work will be paid for from the capital funds.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions or comments, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again, Mayor. So, Chief Shadle, I guess at committee, you guys talked kind of about all of these three together, so I'm going to try to lump that, too. Are we jackhammering up and digging out and totally replacing these approaches, and then is, I guess I can wait until the garage floor, is that also concrete? Is that just being overlaid?
As far as the concrete, those prices include complete removal of what's there, and then re-grading or doing whatever they need to do to prepare the surface and then put in a complete, brand-new apron. So, that was the first question. So, yes. And then, the second question is, yes, the Station 2 floor and Station 1 are concrete inside, and they're, they have a, you know, they're finished, concrete floors, and when we cut the drains, it will take about 18 inches of concrete on each side of the drain, which run most of the length of both bays of the station, and the floor itself, even before we knew we were needing to replace the drains. We were, had it budgeted, I think, last year, actually, as a capital expense to refinish the floor, and that is just the top layer, as far as finishing the concrete. So, they'll cut the drains, and then the next step, once that's all complete and cured and everything, would be to refinish the floor. And that's that last, that third motion that we'll get to.
Okay. I'll ask you about that when we get to that motion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor for, to approve the proposal from Aldos Inc. in the amount of $40,933 to replace the concrete approach at Station 2 and repair the Station 2 drains. The work will be paid for out of capital funds. If there are no other questions, all those in favor will answer aye when their name is called. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Albertini?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And Chairman Flurry, item G?
Motion to approve the proposal from Aldos Incorporated in the amount of $25,636.50 to replace the concrete approach at Station 1. This work will be paid for from capital funds.
Okay. We have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions or comments regarding the motion on the floor? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, motion passed, thank you. And item H, Chairman Flurry?
Motion to approve the proposals from Lifestyle Garage for $18,000 to resurface the Station 2 apparatus bay floor. This work will be paid for from capital funds.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, maybe I'm misunderstanding, are we going to just pour concrete on top of concrete for this?
For this particular motion right here, it is literally just resurfacing the garage floor. So, think of, when, say, a residential garage, it's just concrete. And then, you've seen garages inside of mechanic shops, or people who have really nice garages at home, and they've resurfaced the floor. They put like an epoxy, and it's a different color, and it changes the top layer surface.